Thank you all for allowing me to come in. Thank you. I have taken the liberty, the opportunity to put together something to work with you. So this is just a brief overview of the work that I've done and some thoughts on Narburg based on several conversations with Marlene and others regarding the work that you're doing here as a committee and what your interests are, just some observations of mine having been around here a little bit. Briefly about me, local and grew up here and worked in commercial real estate before eventually working in downtown district management and revitalization through the Main Street program in New Jersey and then Business Improvement District in Old City in bookcases as the executive director. And now I'm working as a consultant to other towns and on staff two days a week at Upper Dublin County as the economic development guy. So a lot of the work that I do is with business attraction and retention based on the work that I've done in commercial real estate. So I apply that in the downtown district setting. Obviously, it's not specific to a single property, but rather to the entire place. Some of the work that I've done, that I do currently is around this area of economic development in the context of a community in a downtown setting. And my work now is in Upper Dublin for the revitalization of the Fort Washington office park and in Lansdowne, which is a real estate disability study. And I got trained in the four-point approach to downtown revitalization through the Main Street programs. I should just write an article on their visions to the four-point approach. And that interestingly is about focusing on what they're calling strategic initiatives and getting more focused around specific projects because their efforts have been diffused through their various silos and too much emphasis, they say, on the promotion and not enough on the economic development. So turning page to understanding of where you are here in Narburg and why I'm here to talk with you today in conversations, understanding that you're focused on two areas of commercial corridors, one the downtown and the other along Montgomery Avenue. And some of the issues are coming together as a community around a vision and understanding the need for the character of the town to be maintained. And this is certainly a matter of quality life, of life, as much as it is for economic development and revitalization. This place, I think, sometimes you don't see the bars in the trees, but this is a gem and it's a place that everybody looks to in the region as a great downtown. And I think in this case, the character is critically important and just maintaining that, what's considered appropriate. So what are the opportunities as well to identify increases in the tax base, the variables coming in? And big question, I think, you know, again, it may be, you know, you've got 10 different responses from five people. What is the right type of development and economic growth? These are, I think, some of the key underlying questions that probably has come up through a number of these land use questions and certainly around the zoning code. And just the different properties that have been talked about that have been perhaps subjects of disagreement or the Baptist church that makes property, potentially other properties coming available such as American Family, the gas station, the use potentially for some public use there on the corner, which is very exciting, and certainly along Montgomery Avenue and the potential for some cooperation with Lower Merion in terms of shared parking concepts. And I understand that we're focused there and I just saw Chris Leslie the other day at this Michael Planning Commission event, that there's certainly a spirit of cooperation to move forward with some shared planning opportunities. Form-based code and what could come of that and are there any unintended consequences perhaps of redevelopment? And church may be an example of that. So these are some of the key questions and issues that you're all dealing with. And then on the next page, I look to, again, in conversations with Marlene and others, what are the opportunities here, working together certainly with you as the elected officials and staff and consultants and being one of those key players. And some market research. And I say market research like because obviously, you know, there isn't an appetite for a lot of analysis and a lot, I'm sure, has been done, but perhaps a survey of consumers and perhaps looking into some of the data that's out there readily available and inexpensively that can be acquired. And a new business recruitment initiative, one that can be used kind of proactively as the need arises. So as a vacancy comes up, is there an opportunity to engage with landlords? And that's, I think, step number one is to understand who these folks are, know how to get in touch with them and engage in a conversation so when a decision needs to be made about, you know, who to lease to, that there can be a proactive approach. And, you know, certainly there's a number of thoughts on what good would look like and what not so good would look like. And you could list out what people like and what people don't like. And there's probably, you know, an opportunity for consensus building around that through something like a survey to then have the conversation about the right appropriate uses coming in. So that being one in terms of proactive approach and recruiting involving, you know, having some options for a landlord. And I mentioned last time that, you know, given the opportunity, some less sensitive landlords may just put in what is most expedient perhaps or who has the highest rents that they can offer as opposed to being part of the vision, buying into what people feel is the right character of the town. How did go about doing that? We talked about the possibility of having a meeting or two, one perhaps with property owners and another with business owners just to have a conversation around that vision to help define it and get buy-in. And then collaboration and discussion and meetings along the Montgomery Avenue corridor, perhaps that would have to be considered, you know, whether you have conversations with that group of landlords and business owners separately from this group perhaps, but also be in coordination with the folks in Lower Merion township as partners. And shared parking being a consideration. So, you know, there are some land use issues certainly and we talked about the depths of the properties and the opportunities for sharing, combining of parking physically speaking and how that would impact the types of uses that are done. Certainly there are limits to who can come to a certain space based on parking availability, zoning issues, et cetera. And then I just have in here some examples of the work that I've done. In Old City, this just references the context of the place there and some of the work that was done by myself in coordination with a committee, economic development committee there. And essentially, we engaged the real estate community, the brokers, the property owners and the developers in conversations. And so it was, in a sense, a wholesale approach. And wholesale in that the real estate community was engaged. And so there was a collaborative effort to promote and market to that community. And they in turn would bring in their clients. And then there was a direct approach on our part to print materials and put it out there and recruit directly to prospective tenants and literally recruit in businesses and real estate developers. In the case, two properties that I mentioned here, I personally brought in the developers for the Sherwood Corner property, which at Third End Market became the CPS. And then another historic property that was vacant and in flight and empty for years, I was able to recruit in and develop there to do beautiful historic innovation job on Chestnut Street.
So a pretty comprehensive view. I have one question on incentives.
Yes.
Historically, you know, we don't have so many, we don't have that many incentives for a particular store to come in or a, you know, they only really had some grants that give you maybe signage and frontage things, which are helpful, but you're still, as a retailer, you're putting out a lot of money yourself.
Yes.
You know, a lot of county and state grants are there or maybe gives them environmental, which is good, but there's not, other than that, there's, you know, unless you show a real case of an increased labor force.
Yes.
Of course, Narburg doesn't have any, we're not in bad shape, we're in very good shape economically, so you don't have that issue or enterprise zone. Are there incentives that are missing out there that you have besides communication, which is a key thing there? You know, there is another thing, just somebody that wants to be in Narburg.
Interestingly, Sean, I think before you got here, I had mentioned that the Michael Planning Commission was presenting on adaptive reuse of institutional properties. They had presented a study that, it was two days ago in Edinburgh. And they referenced incentives, not in monetary terms, but rather what municipalities can do in terms of approvals, expediting of how the process of approval works and some zoning relief. So the parking is a key opportunity for a municipality to demonstrate an incentive in terms of perhaps shared parking where appropriate. So if there's a daytime and a nighttime use, those considerations. Now financially, I think the one that you mentioned about a facade is, you know, really important because the face of the building and the character of the town, there's, if there's any money on a matching grant to be offered, that is itself very helpful. When you look at some facades and again, beauties in the eyes of the beholder, but what good design looks like versus bad, I mean, everybody has an opinion on that. And I think that important to a downtown like this that has such a charming character, that really matters. It can make a real impact.
And I guess the next thing is if we were to look at engaging the viewers, I mean, someone to you, nobody as good as you, of course. But what's I, and I think to me and I'll let the other charm in, I think, they feel that retail recruitment is the key thing to me in, you know, interesting stories in here, be something I love, you don't like, but at least interesting and fairly independent. What type of, you know, dollar amount are we looking at for, you know, consultants out of one day a week mixes into what you're already doing? So you get, you know, unfortunately, you can't do success fees as a municipality as opposed to a private developer.
Yes.
So what type of?
The answer is it's scalable. And when you ask what does it cost, it's kind of like, what's the price of a car? Well, it depends on what kind of car you want. So I would have to answer that question based on a specific scope of work. So, and it could be, you know, you could define it as, here's the project, or you could define it as, here's the dollar amount and what do you get for that? I mean, if you have dollars that you can spend, we can figure out, you know, what you get for that and come up with something that fits. So it's really hard to answer the question, what would this be?
Well, the specific area that I'm interested in is retail recruitment.
Yeah.
As you know, to fortify key properties and properties that you probably don't realize that they, that they can. I know, you know, I know people in this industry, even more from the real estate side, and, you know, they work primarily on success fees, but they have a large bucket of businesses that they're working with that.
Success fees being commissions, essentially. You sell it, you get paid.
Somebody comes in, I guess, you know, you get them to lease a space, so obviously it's a commission and sometimes it's, you know, a larger management organization, they can, and they know. Unfortunately, normally what those people are working with are chains of some type.
Yes.
You know, I think what Narburg has always wanted and you've been very lucky, both because of the dynamics of the lack of partner for some of the chains and such, to find, you know, unique groups, you know, somebody. You know, the basic mindset to me is you go to media, you go to Ambler, you see who's there, you say, wow, would you like to expand the second location of the property?
Absolutely.
But that's easier said than obviously.
It takes some footwork, you know, literally doing that, going to different places and understanding who are good candidates, meeting them and saying, yes, would you like to consider another location? And that's what they do. At Lower Merion, they have a recruiter who is dispersed into their, all their different districts. And Chestnut Street has one as well. And certainly there, I can come up with a number that I think is.
I just want to make a follow-up. You know, we're not ready to make any moves, but we do have a budget to put together.
Yes.
So we're talking about a $10,000 item for a $50,000 item, that's, you know, the type of thing that we need to, in a sense of, you know, and I would, that's a priority for others on the committee, I think, decision.
It's a priority that we have some ideas that when we're looking at the project, we can see if we can, what we can do this year, knowing that we are looking at vacancies and trying to get everything.
Right. So going to the page that I put in that says economic development opportunities. This kind of was the first effort to answer that question, which is looking at possible projects. And if we could take this and turn it into something more specific, because this was essentially a list of possibilities. And if we were to refine it to get to the point where we have a discrete scope of work, I can come back to you very quickly with what that dollar amount is. And so I just asked to kind of go through what business recruitment would be, and I would make some suggestions that a number of these things are part of that.
Oh, yeah. You do have to coordinate the whole package. It's like, why is a business in the economy, well, there's special events.
Yeah.
We understand that. It's just, you know.
So to do a one-off, just to go out and recruit, I mean, that would be essentially that there are elements to that that need to be built.
And then other words. Market research, recruiting, all that.
The research, the putting together a piece, a marketing piece of research, for example, perhaps having those events with business and property owners, that communication and outreach to the people who ultimately, the landlords, have to buy in. Without that agreement, without that conversation, you have nothing. You could have all the ideas and plans in the world, but if that person who has the vacancy doesn't know or doesn't care or buy in, you really have nothing.
What's the, I mean, success is a very typical measurement, but how do you measure success? And that's obviously to us, if we identify five properties and say, we're assuming that these are in, you know, risk of being empty and not getting interest in stores, you know, interest in retailers in there, you know, your mission is in the next six months to make, you know, to get something into these five properties, is success that two, you know, two of them were successful recruitments or is it, you know?
Certainly you can look at the outcome in terms of who comes. And but there's a direct and an indirect opportunity. So things you can control and you can't. For example, getting an agreement from that decision maker that they want to buy into to the concept. I mean, if you have somebody who says, I'm just going to take the highest dollar now, and I'm not so concerned about your vision for who is the right, then you really, again, you have nothing. So it's a soft measure.
So that market research is probably the first step, is to really interview the landlord and say, are you interested in us helping you or are you just going to do what you're going to do? Because, and I think that's a big note that we pursue.
Engaging property owners, I think, is one of the key steps. Maybe not the first step because what do you tell them? What is the vision that is communicated? We have to think about, you know, how, what that message is and there has to be some thought together about what's communicated to a property owner to get the agreement.
Well, I think the market research will help that too. People are saying, you know, trying to tell who's, what the traffic looks like, what who's buying, who's shopping, who's coming here.
What are people looking for?
Spending, you know, and that may adjust some of their expectations to something owners have.
Absolutely.
About what they're thinking their property is worth.
Right.
Pressing themselves down to the fact that it actually exists here, for example.
That's a very good point. I mean, you have an issue often with landlords that have unrealistic expectations and that is another part of the market research to bring to them the data of what, and that's another element I didn't address, and that is perhaps a survey of rents so that they're grounded in realistic expectation.
That's true. Never look at orange for good of that, so.
Absolutely. That could be the case where if they aren't attuned to the market, if they had a tenant that's been there for a long time and paying rent that was fixed perhaps, you know, decade or decades ago.
And then that's, it may also be that the property needs to get improved.
Yes. Yeah.
So it could be brought as a code or something, you know, it could be.
So what are you folks wondering for next steps? Is we be cautious of our time?
Yes.
Okay. And I did, I wanted to ask one question real quick. Are the Iona Avenue area businesses included in Montgomery Avenue? When we talk about that, or say that we, because everybody knows, oh, when we say Montgomery Avenue, we include them because I know they're. Yes, and I think it does make sense to separate those because I think there's probably very different needs and different.
And physical parameters and limitations.
Yes, exactly.
Another one thing to mention, and I don't know how the new code addresses the question of an office use in the downtown, because you have that on the corner of the pharmacy property where it came in.
Yeah, it's tough to address an individual property and ideally that maybe they are insinuating that they are retail.
I understand.
They actually are or not, that's something that employers would figure out, but the point being is the goal and the wording is intended to make sure that all frontages and that ends up in retail, so.
Okay. That's in there.
There's only so many things you can do to make that happen. Part of it is the actual definitions, assistance, being able to see into the property for a potential fee, so it's not an option. Those type of things we've done in the code, I think it's a lot better worded. How you actually, you know, decide if that's retail or not is a challenge.
Right.
But that's, that's the goal, I don't think.
Okay, very good.
Well, I think it makes sense to find out what it would cost to do some of this background work, you know, so get a sense of, get in touch with landlord to know what they're, just know them and get, but before you do that, get a sense of, well, what is our vision for these areas? And that's going to require some conversations.
I would recommend you come back to us with, these are, you know, you know Narburg fairly well, you've heard the conversations, you know, but do it in steps because if you don't get to the front, like, you know, research is inconclusive. If the landlords aren't interested, the rest of it's all moot.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, I would suggest you get back.
There's a variable in terms of defining a vision and how much outreach is done. I mean, is this going to be a small gathering? Is this going to be a public process? I think that obviously more process requires more time and costs. And so I'd look to understand that.
What's going to be effective? I mean, again, you know, right now we have zero outreach in a sense, except we hear back from 20 to 50 people that have a passion to make this down.
Which you could say is anecdotal and not significant, I mean statistically valid sample.
Exactly.
So I would recommend a survey.
Okay, we'll just put all that in. What you think would be best and would be, would have real effect.
Yeah.
Recognizing that, you know, we get a certain point in our ability to spend. And also what the timeline for that type of thing would be.
Yes.
Two months, five months, two days to decide what the committee and get back to the office.
Yeah.
I would say that some of the landlords who are not here, don't live in the area, have phone calls and like, you know, you need, you need, you haven't been able to know what's going on here in a while, so I would say, again, doing what, of course, best, you know, cultivating some relationships and sort of share a vision of, you know, what's exciting, you know, what's going on. You know, there's changes, we have a planner now who, of course, I mean, there's been a lot of teams, I don't know even what they know.
Former planner.
Former planner. I mean, we could, I don't know exactly where they're coming from, if they haven't been involved in just sort of whatever it is, to sort of, you know, it takes something to get somebody.
Okay. There's one question that came up in our last meeting, and Sean, I don't know if you were on the phone at the time, that the question of the comprehensiveness of the list of business and property owners in terms of contact info. And do we know who they are and how to reach them? And that in itself could be a research project, some tax roll, don't tell you what you need to know, it's actually talk to someone.
It's, on a continuum of good, better, best, it's somewhere in the better, better to best category right now. In my head, I can think of different resources we could tap into in the association.
That's a big help.
Yeah.
Good.
But like any, like any contact database, there's improvement, there's.
And they go up slowly, over 15, 20% per year.
Do you have a good quality, you have a quality list of all the business?
I mean, I don't, I don't think our challenge is going to be finding out who the property owners are. I mean, I know Duffy, I know Baker, I've got a good relationship with Dan Cook and John Phelan, you know, I mean, it's a limited amount of people that are controlling most of these properties. So that's not really the issue.
Okay.
I mean, the issue is what gets them to do what we want? Like, is the character the stick?
Yes.
You know, what I'm most interested in is not forming relationships with these people because I think that's not the issue. I think the issue is how do we identify the businesses we want here and bring them to us? That's what I was kind of interested in here, like, how is that accomplished?
And we can address that absolutely. It's building a campaign and building outreach and talking to them, meeting them, emailing them, identifying and then reaching out.
But we have to decide somehow who the people are we want to reach out to.
Right.
And that, I would imagine, is the, some of the research, you know, engaging community, engaging together, what are the opportunities?
Yes.
Sit around, work that you have to establish first.
That's the research, that's the front end of what we're going through, the step process, that's, there's a discussion. Public comment on this topic before we go to the next topic.
Sorry. Okay, Kimberly Bezak, it's hard to get my, the camera on myself, I apologize. Just a few things. Can you talk a bit about this research component, the cost of that aspect of the process? Another question, does this, how does this fit into our existing business association and the work they do? And then also is this, you talked earlier about how you'd worked with the Business Improvement District in Old City, so would it be creating something like that here in Narburg and calling it a Business Improvement District or is this something completely different? I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Which, okay, Business Improvement District, I'll take that first. I was the executive director of two different bids and those are different, they probably would not apply here. That is a real entity that's formed through a public process, it's kind of like an extension of government and they have the authority to impose, to levy an assessment on properties. And from that assessment comes a budget and that enables them to do all the different programming. So that probably would not be happening. That's just not, not appropriate for this situation and setting. Possibly with some exception, there's been some conversation about this on Montgomery Avenue across various, across both jurisdictions along a roadway. Linear bid similar to in Lower Merion, I'm sorry, on City Avenue, which is standing both sides of City Avenue. Coordination with the Narburg Business Association, great point, very important to do that. And obviously, they have great programming and relationships and to work with them as a partner would be vital. So yes, absolutely. Both in terms of defining that vision as well as hear the outreach and hearing who they would like as their neighbor. What was the other question? Oh, research, market research. like as their neighbor. What was the other question? Oh, research, market research. We're talking about several different components to that, one being a survey of consumers, and that could be wonderfully crowdsourced through your efforts, as well as, I know this is a very activist community, so I think a lot of people would want to contribute their thoughts on this. And the research is purchased essentially, and you go to a party that, a third party that sells this, they, they take the census data and they add to that, they extrapolate, they could get information as specific as you define the radius of the population and what they buy in different categories, and what is sold here, and they can look at the surplus or, or lack of supply and demand for any given category of retail, service, and product. It's really amazing, the data that you can get. So that's syndicated information, and that can be acquired for probably between, well, less than a thousand dollars, and you can get each of these reports kind of out of card, you know, ordered up on a menu of different, different types of specific reports, since we've talked with the committee about what's most important to, with this committee for, for what information you'd like to see. And I could advise on that based on what I should.
No, I don't, I don't. I'm sorry, I just, I feel like this is important because you mentioned as like non-monetary incentives, things like expediting approval or coming up with ideas for shared parking and that kind of thing. And I'm just wondering, is that kind of incentive legal? And also, more important, what are the optics on that? Because when we had a situation like that where, without even paying for a recruiter, a developer came in and wanted to do a adaptive reuse of the Baptist Church, and with, when there was even, and then the incentive was nearly, not even like expedited approval, but that the borough might consider an ordinance that was even allowed him to bring a proposal forth without guaranteeing anything, people got really upset. And said, well, that's not right, you're doing spot zoning, like, what are you doing? So how, how do you do the optics of that, like, making it seem like you're offering carrots to developers? People, you know, cry, that's unfair, that's...
This is a big question, a big topic. I can't speak to the history here, but certainly in the world of land use and public process for that, there's the opportunity, and this actually was an example that came from the Monaco Planning Commission on how incentives can be done with these tools. So certainly, Sean, it's not a question of legality, it's a question of, of the process being one that is designed to be flexible and user-friendly. And it can be interpreted in a number of different ways, but when you look at parking ratios and the opportunity to, to use parking as a flexible thing, where there's a nighttime and a daytime use that are combining to share that parking, that's now considered to be a progressive land use approach for smart planning and zoning. So that, that's not a legality question.
Right. Well, that's what we had, we had that opportunity, but people thought that there was something kind of shady about it.
I really can't speak to that.
Yeah, I think, I think to answer the question, putting on my former career hat, is that the, as long, if there are incentives, as long as they're applied broadly to a collection of properties, that's one way the borough can be protected from claims of spot zoning. And just because there's a spot on the map is not sufficient to fulfill the claim of spot zoning unless, if, if the zoning district, for instance, there is a spot on the corner of North Linwood Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, that says this is where a apartment, a three C zoning district, and it's the only lot up on that corner that has that, that's not spot zoning because we can point to a larger issue of that's an ideal location being next to two busier roads for a multifamily style development. So having a spot on the map is not necessarily spot zoning, but having restrictive standards or permissive standards that apply to one spot and one property only and one condition only, your solicitor would probably raise a concern with that.
And that's where he says told us in the past, you need to treat any business that isn't fine as that business in a reasonable way as you treat the other businesses with those.
So any, any standards or, or permissive reuse options with regards to what types of uses you could put in an institutional building has to be evenly applied to all institutional buildings. And I think we've done that in the code.
We should, we should go, let people waiting, and this has been really helpful.
Thank you, appreciate your time. And I will call up and get you.
I have a good call.
Thanks, very good.
Thank you.
Pete Johnson, is it?
Yeah.
So maybe we should just have you come up and kind of give us, you know, obviously we're talking about pocket parks, like if you want Sally to come up too, that's, that's always good, because she likes to be on the camera. And we also, Pete, I don't know if you've met Ken Corle, Ken is the property owner of the Fitness Station or?
I'm here.
Hi, Johnson, nice to be here.
Ken, are we referring to it as Cadence Fitness Station or?
Yes.
Corle Enterprises?
Cadence.
Cadence, okay, it's supposed to be a, a company, Peter Johnson.
Hi, I'm reporting.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Peter Johnson.
Johnson.
Johnson, okay.
By way of background, just for the others that are here, Peter, it came to us via Sally, who has put out, you know, a thoughtful design for a potential pocket park at Cadence. His company, Think Green, does these type of projects, and somebody, you know, through the Sally's work with in the past, and I thought if he could spend a little bit of time telling us, if we were moving forward on this type of project, what would be involved, you know, to get him there to the point where this, what the type of flexibility, and I should put out that if we do move forward with this, we obviously would speak to other folks that are in this arena, that do this type of thing. But, you know, I think we needed to have somebody that, that does this, because the question we gave, oh, we need landscape architect, we do this and that, and so I thought it would be good direction for the committee to hear more about what his group would do and what they would need from us if we were to move forward.
Is that in comparison?
Yeah. But a couple things, I think everyone's, it's on your, what was that, right? You've seen the design, everyone's seen that, kind of is familiar with it, very cool. And yes, when you're discussing the landscape architect part of this, we are a landscape architecture firm by how we started. Tom and I, like, are business partners, so we're true landscape architecture. We do design, build, and build. So we're a turnkey company. We don't, you know, they overlap, those companies overlap. And Tom and I lead all those projects from the beginning, like this, through construction. We're probably unique to fill out the area in terms of how we do it. There are construction managers that then sub people, so we, we don't do that. We're, we are truly, when we get to the build side, so we have the design side documentation, we're licensed landscape architects, and then on the build side, we have twenty-five to thirty, you know, workforce. So company-wise, we're, you know, typically range between twenty-five and thirty-five people. So we do everything in-house. We do have some electrical subcontractors and things like that at times, and plumber, you know, but we, we carry, deal with all permitting, you know, design documentation to the level that it needs for permitting. So we, our objective is to build projects, you know what I mean? It's not to get caught up in design paralysis, you know, and just waste money. So our objective is a, is a, is, you know, in our profession, is to build really cool projects, which means that obviously, we need to get paid for the work we do, but we try to balance the design and the construction. It's not saying that projects don't, there are many projects that, that need that entire process to go through. But a lot of these projects that have limited funding, you know, in terms of the amount of budget that you have to, to build, you know, that everyone has to, to put into the pot, per se, the object is to actually get the most out of it. So our, our design build fees wrap with , with construction. It's all part of the package. We do, so it's thirteen years, fourteen years, you know, running. We started our company in basements, so, you know, we have a reputation with, we do work with probably every landscape architecture firm in the city of Philadelphia, Andrew Hoga, Allin Partnership, WRT, Lottor, obviously, that's a new name, but all those firms, PHS, we've had a longstanding, good relationship with, with them and build projects every year.
Yes, one, one of the issues we had, a recent project, unfortunately, maybe having other projects, we've gone through the design phase, just as you're saying, we've gone through the design phase with one group, and then when we got to the construction phase, we had a cost break and other issues that made it unbuildy. We recognize there's a reality that design has a cost to it.
True.
How do, the question is, you know, the frustration is you don't want to spend too much money on design without knowing what the cost will be, same time, it's tough to give costs until you are basically on a design. How does that incorporate into how you handle projects?
So Sally's a project for design, of which she's done for free, so far. So, I mean, basically, she's, she's kind of put a whole package together, which is really great. And we already have a cost to it.
You've already looked at that.
Right, okay. So, but.
The normal ownership, the ownership, we had to prepay some, we were just fortunate we have an arbor patch here.
Right.
It started us off in this way, but I still like to see her in conference.
You know, she hasn't paid me either.
So it's hours of work, right? This is, this is the part that's the most, you know, interesting, or, you know, this is where the expertise is kind of like, I want to say copyrighted or patented. I mean, it's just that we know how to do it. There's a lot of people say they know how to do it, but they don't know how to do it. And we do. So we, we, we create a budget, okay? And the reality is, there are some aches and pains throughout that process of budget. So right now, we took that concept and we put numbers to it, you know what I mean, and put our neck out on the line. At the same time, as we, we still need to, you know, take that further, a little bit further, and document it to a level that is comfortable with getting permitted. You know, the reality is getting permitted also with the client, with you guys, to say, okay. Yeah, of course. So I mean, when I say you, everybody has, you know, can, can grasp it and, you know, understand what the project is.
Have you done public private, you know, partnerships before? Is that what this?
PHS. So Penn State University, Villanova University, Dickinson College, we work at pharmaceuticals, Esther, and whoever knows, we're up there right now. Design and build, traditional landscape architecture and build. Like I said, Straw Water Research Center, you know, it's, there's a big list.
Hopefully, we're going to try to, depending on the number, seek some private investment. That would go, people could directly send that to you, and that would offset whatever are.
Well, you own the contract. Could be one building, one, one person we build, we'd have to come up with some way to, to do that. I don't know what that is.
Typically, no, typically the funding, so the funding would be, say you're the client, or you're the client, the funding would either run through at some kind of a owner, owner run.
Creation of a, I mean, worst case, we'd creation of a corporation's or, or trust or organization or, or something. We would do that.
For a five-oh.
Yeah.
Something like that.
So there would be, we'd have people who are involved, I think is really the simple answer, but he would not want, he wouldn't want to deal checks coming from eight different places. This is the number, somebody's guaranteeing.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to say, we have, we haven't not ever done that, we have done that, I mean, it just, I don't know that.
Somebody, somebody at the bottom line said, I will pay.
Yeah.
You will get paid X.
That's right.
And, but you're going to get a check from your end.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, we've done it, it happens from end to end, but in a contract that would set up that there's somebody responsible, that we will get paid.
How long did you think it would take to find that we saw, knowing that obviously the?
It's usually six to eight weeks, a couple months. You know, I mean, it could be four, five, six weeks, it could be longer. So Weaver's Way is another one we stood. So, I mean, it's a perfect example of, you know, high profile, you know, ages, you know, ages, you know, baby through ninety years old, walking through a site, seeing it get built, not counting the fact that it took, the first go-around was a year, and it got table because everyone was like, I want this, I want this, I want this, and we kept going, right? So we got to the point, and we're like, here's a budget, like, oh, well, we can't afford that, right? But that was because the scope changed, you know? So here, you kind of have a scope, which we're going to have to maybe move some parts, you know what I mean, take out some scope, make sure everything's done well. So what we did with that is, they, they called back, you know, I don't know, it was like in, in January, and they had a new leader of projects, their capital project improvements, because obviously, fresh market was difficult also in opening. So we ended up, she's like, are you still interested? You know, we have X, you know, I don't want to say how much it was, but, you know, it was under seventy-five thousand dollars. So, and they, they're like, are you still interested in this? I was like, absolutely. So we came up with a concept that would lead to a scope, that would give them, you know, a whole new look and entrance to what is right, what was a really bad entrance to the Chestnut Hill facility. Now it has a stage seating, they have a little amphitheater, they can do, they've already had major events there, performances, readings, name it. It's, it's just, you know, it turned it around completely. But the process of that, just, just saying no, making those decisions, that's, it's a pretty, they don't, they don't like to make decisions quickly, and no disrespect, but it's, it's because they're very attached to whatever they do, and they want to make sure they make the right decisions. And you have, there's a trust, I guess, one way. So we had a trust to do that, to be able to work together as a team, and be like, all right, we're putting our neck on the line, we know this is Weaver's Way, we're going to do this right, we're going to get it right. And we did it, you know?
I would like to say the same thing for, when Peter and I worked together, it was for the PHS pop-up of Laida, which is a far bigger project than this, that was spec'd for eight weeks of construction. And doing it, and it wasn't even meant to be a design build, it was meant to be just like, here's the design, do it. And it ended up being a design build, and in the end of the period, I think three and a half weeks, it was like just good partnership, good movement, getting scheduled.
If we didn't know you through Sally, how could we have found you?
Website.
Well, I guess the point is, you know, we're going to, you tried to get, you know, a couple other people in, you know, and if we didn't know you, we wouldn't, you know, just hate to go with the word Google, go, landscape architect or design project. So, I mean, is there, you know, a group that, you know, that you helped, that you would be founded in a more specific, or just literally look up Think Green, so that we, you know, can tell a couple people, if you want to entertain what we're doing, let us know, you know, we have that option of both price and quality, the service is built in, so there's a, I don't know exactly what the bid process needs to be on a project like this, when you do have professional services combined with construction services. And Sean, is there, on a project like this, I'm going to just throw a number of eight thousand, or just to get the scope in work. So, and there's a, can we, by law, on something that involves some of professional services, need to do a bid? I mean, I was with policy by all means.
I think every situation's unique, and I think that for a project like this, and I'm, I'm a little bit familiar because before I sat at a desk, I did landscape design and worked on a crew. So I think it's best to have the people who are, who have thought through the design, done the design, be the ones on the site to say, that's where the idea versus participation goes, this is where the granite goes. So I think that's good to have that all as one package, and then, yeah, you would procure all those services and goods and product together as one. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, that would just be administrative complexity that's not more to, to, to take the service piece out of it.
So, so I understand that part, but you have. So if we were to look to three groups to do it, one may have very, you know, we might consider all of construction the same, but we know the design, sort of, design services are going to be a professional service.
It's your industry, right? So, so that, that's pretty much a standard. So, so that, that's pretty much a standard model, that the designers are in-house, the crews in-house.
Well, no.
Well, it depends, to what level? There are, there aren't many firms like ours in terms of that actually have the professional background of over twenty years of experience on big thinking projects, you know? Denver redevelopment project toward the old Stapleman Airport, Hebrew Seater on master planning, or if you wanted to see Hyrum Ban, then all the way to construction. Like to like, okay, I live in Philadelphia, I love this place, this is what we do. We're going to build projects that are really cool. But there aren't, I hate to say it, many landscapers that can do it. You know, there's designers who are landscaping.
There's dollars, there's not that many.
Yeah, I mean, do design buildings. That's, yeah, friend for friends, we just built a natural placecape for them. You know, that was, that was a design build, they originally had a design by a placecapes company, right? They wanted to change it, which we did the design of that company and said, this is what we're going to build. Well, when we did the contract, we never anticipated doing a full redesign, but we did it. We didn't get charged any more money because we're like, okay, well, we know we can make this cooler. So I was willing to take that as an investment or friend for friends, you know? But that means that we can make quick decisions with good design and build it. You know, there's a lot of, I can, I can, there's probably fifteen properties that have gone that way for me. You know, so it's, it's a process and you have to have a trust. And like, so there, I've worked, so this is in the public and private realm. So I think you just have to decide who it's run through and then you can pick who you want. And then you could also solicit your bid and say, you know, you know, only the, only the people on this bid, only of the people on this invite are the ones that are allowed to build, bid it. You know, like, it's, it's, I mean, it's a different, it's a different type of, of project because what you're going to find, there's going to be a lot of people that want to do it. So then there's going to be a construction manager that goes and wants to hire a landscape architect and they come together like they're a team, but all they do is subcontract everything. You know what I mean? Which we don't do. We have subcontractors, but we don't, the bulk of the work is all done by us. It's our construction equipment, our trucking, you know what I mean? It's, it's us. You know, and then we pull in pieces that we need as we go. So like low voltage lighting, all, you know, LED lighting, all that, we do it in-house, all we need is an outlet.
So you're asking how we would proceed with regards to.
Well, I've got a sense on that, I guess that I'm concerned for the public perception, the public reality that, you know, you don't, you like to get more than one opinion on anything you're spending on. Personally, these type of reputations are, are strong to me, but I also know that if I didn't, you know, know Sally's professional work and, you know, what they're presenting, I would say, great. It's just the only game in town. I get a better sense that there's very few games in town to do it in the design build realm. And that's what I was trying to get a sense of, and I know exactly what the alternative is, is to hire a design firm and then get bids. And by the time you do that, you end up both, you know, maybe we come in cheaper, who knows? But we're not about cheap, it's really about quality of execution and maintaining the vision at work.
The flexibility you were saying of when you're doing something, you know, being able to modify that based on the type that you already, you need to design.
Yeah, and again, I mean, this isn't a redesign per se either, I mean, it's a, it's, no, right? Documenting it, right? So we're familiar with the style, we understand, you know, if you look through, if you're through anything, it's the, the, you know, the lighting, you know, the garden light, the, you know? How do we make, how do we make some, some seating and things like that, walls, you know? We've already had some of these discussions, obviously, we've, we've gone through it. You know, I'm not in business to give, give out all the scope anymore. You know what I mean? So I, I want to work with people that want to work with me. And I'm not in this business to lose. I've, I've gotten burned and I won't do it anymore.
Say this is what I'm doing, someone says, great, I can do it for two thousand dollars.
No, I mean, anyone could do that if it's not apples to app, if it's not apples to apples, it's not apples to apples and it never is. I can put, I can say with a hundred percent confidence that it's never the same as what we give.
So I guess, you know, again, so be careful of time, but do you want to move, see what we can do to move this forward? You know, there's three elements to me. How much would, based on the design, again, there's a ballpark number that we're, you know, at this stage, that we're likely should target. Second, coordinating it with Ken to make sure that it both works with his vision of the property and, you know, any legal issues that we need to deal with because, you know, it's his property. And then third, assuming those two things are desired by council.
Right.
You know, finding the funding to do this in a reasonable way. And that's, that's our problem at that point. But the first problem is knowing what scope of dollars we're talking about. Second, making sure that, you know, in the context of the product, the property, if Ken's on board, you know, if there's any issues that we need to know from him. So that we can come up with some type of legal agreement to use the lands and however it works out, so.
Right, I mean, I think it's.
Are you comfortable with this dollar ballpark?
It's a passive, it's a passive part, you know, passive, part like whatever you want to call it. It's, so I mean, there's probably got to be some kind of land lease agreement, you know? It's going to definitely promote your business, you know, which is, you know, it's got to be a partnership. So there's got to be some kind of agreement that helps from the legal side, unfortunately, because we know that there's always legal stuff, so. But, you know, again, don't overcomplicate it. You know, I would, you know, we all get stuck in things and that adds up. But it's like, okay, well, that's this percentage of the project, so there's more and more, you know, tables and chairs that go away. I mean, which means that there's less people enjoying it. So it's like, how do you get that balance with public space? You know, once you have it, it's amazing what people, you know, they'll gather.
Yeah.
You know?
I'm not confident.
Yes. No, we just did a project in La Salle, very similar, it was a pop-up garden in La Salle. You know, and there were a lot of naysayers, you know, like, this is crazy, why are we doing this? Well, it's green store water infrastructure, it's to help the Philadelphia Water Department get their taxes, their tax credits, you know? But also there's cool chairs, there's cool hammocks, there's, you know, all kinds of big outdoor games. You know what? It's packed. I mean, I couldn't even finish the hammocks and they were sitting and I had to like push the kids off to be able to relash everything to get it right. You know, it's amazing. You know, you build those kinds of places and people will come and they'll be aggravated, you know, it's, it's, but you got to take the risk, you know, to do that kind of stuff. You were at some point, you know, you have to take the risk, it's like, you like it. Yeah.
For all we know, we might have stuff collecting dust there, but the reality is we don't believe that.
Well, right, right now, I mean, you have a great corner, you know what I mean? And you have a great space that, that could be invigorated, you know, and that's what's key.
I also think it lands well with what the business is because it's a fitness place.
Absolutely.
So like this space all comes together and then it's.
It does, you know, it's a really great design. So, you know, I'm, I think we're excited to be sitting with you here to be able to work with, with you.
Do you have a comfort level as to what the dollar amount we're looking at on the project is based on the design?
And if not, like, could you give us that?
It's not a.
I guess what.
I wouldn't say it's a firm bid at this point because we have a whole process to go through. But, you know, again, are we looking at a twenty thousand dollar project, a two hundred thousand dollar project?
Like how big is that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so.
I think there's a number.
There's a number two.
I think it's the same question that was asked of Graham earlier, it depends on what kind of car we want to buy.
So yeah, it's like we've got, fortunately we have a design that has a lot of elements in it, like.
Yeah, I mean, the one part about the, the design is that what I tried to do was give what I would like to do ideally. So there's a big seat wall that that's going to be a conflict and you can value the year that based on it. So it is a little bit as far as what you, you know, what do you want to pay for, but we do.
Sorry, another question. If, if, just to put this out here, if Sally were engaged for a dollar in terms of the selected landscape architect and designer for this project right now, why couldn't she run the project? Would you have to bid at that? I know the numbers, I know the numbers, but I'm, I'm, this is again, you know, it's a lot, it's, 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 we put a, a ton of hours into that stuff. And then what happens is that number gets out there and then it's up. And I guess that's my, that's my only.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, that's why.
There's a spreadsheet of four pages right now with every number on it.
Okay.
And I just don't.
But we have to put, our problems, we're putting budget together for next year.
Yeah, so you need to figure out.
Pretty much to say, you know, it's up to me, I would say, let's put a hundred thousand dollars towards.
It's under two hundred thousand dollars.
So that's the type of thing we could back to try and say.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand, we get everything.
But I'm just saying, that would be a number that you could probably.
Because there's going to be other, we're going to try to find other funding as well.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's silly to.
But it gives people who are thinking of contributing for private investments or what we're not, but, you know?
Yeah, well, no, I just need to be able to, it's the first time we met, we talked on the phone, which was a great conversation. I know I was away, so I apologize, it took a couple of days. But I think that it's just a comfort level, you know, to be able to trust each other, to be able to get to something, you know? I'm willing to take that risk. I was already willing to take that risk when we worked on the numbers, you know, for, for Sally to get to here. You know, I mean, she's passionate about the project, we're passionate about what we do and build. So we trust her, you know, and want to have the same kind of, you know, partnership with, you know, communities around here, so.
Ken, while you're here, what, what are your, I think you've taken a good look at the design that's posted.
Very nice.
Yes. What are your concerns either on the design or as a property or that we need to be addressed if we were?
Instead of works with any future, I might be, you know, going up two stories and I'm going to build out in the front, the doors are, the big doors. So that's not going to interfere with what they're doing on the side, but just so it works with that.
Which, which, you know, there's, that's pretty cool also because there's, you know, if, if he's able to go up two stories, there's a whole different perspective on that. You know, because you're able to be above that landscape, which is creating also, there's things you could do. Green roofs, I mean, you could be a model of, you know, a certain amount of sustainability. You know, a big component to all of our projects is that you may think about small water and, you know, what kind of infrastructure could you have there? You know, there's different levels and then there's different funding. You know, there's different ways to get grants for that kind of thing. I mean, it probably would be great, like a couple. You know, but there's, there's ways to get some.
Well, that's what we're starting on, we might not know how far along we need to be to get to start applying for certain grants, going forward to two thousand seven, so.
Yeah. And look, this, this is the beginning of, you know, it's going to take a while to do. I mean, I follow projects that turn quick and go six months and like those things happen. So like a good goal would be for you guys to plan to try to do this, you know, in two thousand seventeen, starting in the spring or June, something like that. You know, and not, but at a time where it doesn't affect you too much, you know, in terms of your business. But like Weaver's Way, that's their door. So they have one front door and then they have a side door that goes through like a, a storage area. And then they have the door that where we're working. So we had it set up, like if there were deliveries. Yeah, we'd like help, you know, move it all the way. If there were certain high times of the day, we did that, we didn't work on weekends. You know what I mean? We probably had it so that it was safe for people to go in and out all the time. You know, so they changed, the, the thing that stayed there was the asphalt path, we didn't change that. So they were always able to do, so that's the kind of thing you guys do that. There were people talking to crews all the time, once they got to know them, because they saw them all the way through the process, you know, every day, because they go there every day, some of those people. University City District, we built Woodland, forty-second Woodland, that pop-up park space, which now is actually going to become permanent during the process of that. But we took on a bus turnaround, you know, it was a pretty complex project, but we worked with them, you know, Prima was there at the time. She ended up hiring us to do two projects there and, and forty-eighth Baltimore, just by Gold Enriched, the cafe, which to make it safer and how we're going to do it. It was complex, it was a city, you know, we had to get approvals, striking, you name it. And like, we, we tried to get as much as we could and we, you know, little by little, it got peeled apart, but it still ended up a project. You know, there's huge boulders, there's three ton boulders sitting in the street there with these planters, you know, and, and it's, it got, it happened, you know? So there's, and we had a certain budget, so we had to make sure we took those budgets and, you know, worked with them together.
So.
You know, and a lot of community, community, you know, these meetings, which, you know, lengthy, there's a bunch of meetings with people and participants and that were all, lived in those two, two areas that were pretty influential.
Sean, do you have any thoughts? Did you know what we're talking about? No? Ask for public comment on this particular topic, or any economic development topic.
First I want to say, you know, thanks for the work that you guys did already, the work that you already did. We really appreciate it. I think, I think, I'm pretty convinced that everyone would enjoy and use what we're talking about. I don't think there's, I think that's pretty unanimous. The only issues, like with most, like with most things are economic, you know? When Bob's talking about who's your competition, it's just, you know, due diligence to make sure we, you know, we get other bids on this. And when we talk about like whether or not we're going to do it in a private-public thing, you know, the, the pushback on a project like this is, one, you know, just to use that two hundred thousand dollar number, even though it's under two hundred thousand. That's a significant part of the budget. And so, you know, that's a, you know, that's saying we're making this a big priority. And you, you got opinions on both sides there, you know, because spend on this, you don't spend on something else. And then the other pushback is that this is making a significant investment in improvements on private property. And so that's the other aspect that the pushback. I think, I think it's unanimous, everyone would love the space. And, you know, and so, you know, I just want you to know it's like, it's not a resistance, I don't think there's going to be any resistance to the project in general. It's just like, are we going to be able to and are we going to prioritize spending that money? I think that's really what it comes down to. The, the public would love to have a central town square area. And, you know, how do we get there? I think the big question is the economic question.
Well, and the other, the other sort of thing is that if we come up with a lease agreement that's time limited and then we wish to, you know, because nobody, we've got whole station several area. You know, I know people want to improve that, their lease is set there, it's a complicated situation. But, you know, to the extent that things would maybe shift or be moved or be reused somewhere else, that's part of the, I guess, cost concept. You know, what, what do we get to keep, what can be moved, what, you know?
Yeah, that would all be part of it, that would all be part of it.
Part of the investment just to, is, is it getting an account and experience of a central area that may actually, you know?
Right.
But we don't have that experience all right now. So while it's private, it's on private property, it's actually invested in the town experience that would, you know, hopefully become a permanent thing, but not necessarily stay there.
Right, well, I guess that's a perfectly, I think forty, forty-second Woodland is, so Phil- Philadelphia land, University Sciences land, University City District is the, the, you know, owner rep in terms of the project. Funding was grant money, you know, and University City District matching. So there's a whole, you know, and now it's, it's torn down, it was award winning, it's, it's torn down and now it's going to be permanent. So those are, I mean, things, it's not wasted money as much as it's public awareness, you know, comfort. I mean, people actually use that space all the time. So Starbucks was across the street and now it went from a concrete triangle to five tables, chairs, big tree trunks, planters and everyone sitting in it every single day. And then people were upset when it was getting taken down. We recycle all the planters, all the wood for the planters were taken out of, you know, abandoned apartment or renovated apartments. So we used all the wood and, you know, reclaim, reuse, rebuild, recycle everything. So like even the trees, the trees were from the cemetery that was repiled right next door, the tree trunks, a lot of them were from there. So again, you know, when you talk about public bid, you know, in comfort zone, we're not the cheapest out there. We won't be ever, but we're going to be quality, you know what I mean? And we back up our product. So that's the, that's the other part, we're not going to, we, I win public bids, you know, Veterans Park in Plumsteadville, we built that. You know, it turned out great, they were really ecstatic and happy and it's a really wonderful place.
Yeah, it just was a public bid too.
Yeah, it just was a public bid. But, you know, when you're talking about a project like this that hasn't been decided yet, like what it is, you know, that's the.
Challenge.
That's the challenge of this, because it's not designed all the way through, you know, so we have to figure that out as you go. I think that. know, so we have to figure that out as you go. Uh, I think that a lot of places don't always exercise that clause saying the lowest qualified bidder. What is the lowest qualified bidder?
Lowest qualified.
What's qualified?
Yeah.
Twenty-five years of experience, design-build projects with X, Y, and Z. You can write this to whatever way you want.
Yeah.
The reality is, they need to be qualified. Because if you're not qualified, you're not gonna get anyone, you know? And that's, that's what we're here to protect, is the fact that you actually get the product. You know, you're gonna have the design, but you get the product. Which you already have it, I mean, right now, legally she owns the documents, you know, for that, which is great. I mean, she's already put a huge investment in. And so Sally would be a part of this whole process. That's the other part, you know, with us. You know, we have her as well.
So we'd be hired locally.
Yeah, well, that's why I was suggesting.
People know where you live.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily, did she wanna hold a contract per se, because we have all the insurances we need?
No, no, no.
You know what I mean? But, but I was saying that, you know, as part of the team.
That's one of the important things, is the, is the, yeah, is local services. Is there, is there any other public comment on this project?
And I do understand everything you said, so I, I take it all as like, it's, you know, it's like, it's the truth, what you were talking about in terms of public perception. Yeah, what it comes down to for me is like, if, if I knew we had the money, I'd be like, do it tomorrow. Right, absolutely. Everybody would, you know? I agree.
So, um, I, I, I love Sally's design sense, a hundred percent. Um, I'm just sort of wondering why this space, and it's a little bit of chicken and egg thing, where the public is being asked to support something before knowing any of the costs or any of the terms of use, um, because there's been kind of a heavy push to get public to write letters, like in council and stuff.
For interest, if you're buying.
Right, but that's kind of unprecedented. I've never seen council members ask for letters, like for any other.
You always ask your residents to get involved in private council matters, to express their opinions regarding, encourage people to write, it's not action, no, with regard to what council's doing.
Oh, I know, yeah.
It's good to have people show up and come to the meeting, and we're at the council as well.
Sure, in a general way, that's always been, or asked of the public, but I've never seen something so specific. So, um, it just, it just raises a lot of questions in my mind about the process.
That was me asking for, that was me on my public media for, you know, site staffing, saying.
Well, no, it was Bob also, who was the mayor, like, so it was official people, I mean, yeah.
It's a little different, but normally when other council members have kinda said to their friends, please write a letter that we see, but this, you know, to be public and transparent about, hey, if you're interested in a project like this.
Right.
Write to your council members and let them know that there is an interest. I think that's a healthy.
Right, and that, that seemed to be kind of like the premise of the mayor's town hall meeting, was to ask people to write letters for this project. So, um, it, it just, but without knowing any of the costs, it just seems that it's cart before the horse, maybe that's more of the, um.
I, I think, I think the complexities here is that nobody's spent any money yet. I mean, it's been friends, let's just face it.
Right, right.
So I would say that there are, I mean, in public interest in those things, that's a good thing for advocacy. I mean, that no one's gotten, there's been no professional services rendered. You know, so it's more of a matter of movement than it is, you know, in, in forward thinking, I guess, to get excitement.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because that could be good or, like, in the end, in my opinion, all that could come out of that is, is, is good, you know, because there's, there's investment by people in time and energy that hasn't cost anyone anything yet.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get that, like, building, support building enthusiasm, which I think is a great idea to do in advance. Um, uh, so I'm, I'm just wondering, um, would Sally's designs have to apply to this space, or, you know, can we think about other properties that Borough already owns, um, such as Station Circle? And, and then where does this fall in the whole list of priorities of Borough properties, like, say, mine park, the playgrounds? Um, you know, I, so I feel like there's a lot of jumping ahead.
I will say, I don't, I just wanna say, like, this, this is not, um, this is not about the Borough owned properties, this is economic development. The idea with this committee is to, you know, provide, you know, opportunities for economic activity to happen.
It's a great.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not really about our best, that this money should have been going to doing something with one of our buildings, that it's too dynamic to take with each other.
Well, that, I just wanna reiterate that, you know, it's impossible, if you throw, just throw a number out there, especially a big number, you know, hey, $200,000, and you don't have something for someone to look at, you're like, no way. I mean, you have to have, can't, like, eye candy for people to get invested and want to, want to pursue it, or maybe even wanna, you know, donate money to it. So, you know, and like, it was mentioned, it would be one thing if, you know, the, you know, council were paying me to do it, and then all of a sudden it might seem wonky, but, I mean, it's a free design, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, it's, and it is an infusion of ideas, which I think need more of that, like, people coming forth with ideas.
So can I add to one thing to that?
Oh, can I say, one thing that I've noticed with that space is that as an open space, we've been able to do a lot, like, show movies, have tables and chairs, like, use it for Oktoberfest. And I wonder if having an, a permanent installation there will reduce use, not expand use.
Well, no, because one, the use is all based on, you know, whether Kenny is, you know, we've been lucky that he wants to share that space, right? And right now, what it is, is, you know, the traditional sort of pop-up, yeah, throw some tents up there and a couple of string lights, and yeah, you can always have fun there. But if you actually have an infrastructure where people can use it not just during, hey, from five to nine we're gonna show a movie, but like, all day, any day, when you have moms who are moving through town with their kids, that can sit there, hey, why don't you meet me down there? All of a sudden, it becomes more of a active space in the middle of our town, which then promotes people to use businesses or what have you, rather than, I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't go downtown to hang out unless I'm in the Greeks or something. I'm not sitting in the middle of town. So I feel like it would draw me, it would draw other people. I think of when I was, looked like, you know, mom with my kids going through there. Uh, we just don't have any good, like, green space to meet in town, other than, you know, one of those benches. But, so I think you're gonna, the purpose that I had when I created it was to make it a space that was flexible, that could be used for special events, but also be active, you know, for the rest of the time. It's a hundred percent usable.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a good point, that, um.
I think what I was saying too is, if it's, people will use this, I think it will be heavily used.
But that's part of the reason why all those events we scheduled, like, you know, created the movie nights and the Parklet Social, and all those things to get people energized, and what we can use with this space.
Absolutely.
And that goes hand in hand with regards to the quest to contact and reach out to council, like, we can use this property. And I look at this group as more of an ideal lab, you know, we're trying to think of what we can do in there to contribute to our downtown.
And you should.
More voices, we can get into the conversation, the more people are capable by writing letters to council, the better.
Yeah, economic development's a good thing. I mean, if, this invigorates that, right? So the idea, you're asking about playgrounds and park space and all those things. Well, the goal is, you've got maybe, what, there's probably twenty people, twenty families that go through here to look at a residence, to buy a residence, and if they're coming through on a Saturday or Sunday, or a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and they see a space like that, and there's families there, there's kids there, there's people hanging out, I mean, it just takes one thing to attach to, to be like, alright, I wanna live here.
And it's also an all ages venue, too.
It's all ages.
Which is really nice, because you know how to have kids to be attracted to us, they should, you know, like, me, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a universal kind of meeting.
Yeah, and that's my point, I guess, you know, then that helps with the, with, you know, community, right? So, community is from the town out, you know, you, you would hope that it's got the strongest heart to be able to, like, keep wanting people to come here. Not that they don't now, they do.
Right.
I'm just saying, I, it's, just makes it more fun, you know, it makes it more community-based, you know? So, um, I think it's a, it's a good idea to start from the center of town and from the interior or the core to work your way out also. You know, because you still, there's, every, every place needs, um, maintenance and repair or upgrading and things like that. But I think the vision is, it's just like Central Park, Central Park, Homestead said, you're gonna need this park. There was nothing built yet around there. And it's eight hundred and fifty-two acres, and there's no land left, you know? So, it's the same concept, it's just a smaller scale, is that you wanna have the vision to create small spaces like that, that people will, will, you know, be engaged in and, you know, participate in.
Right. Well, I, I would, I would love to see, also, just some clarification of whether this does have to go up to public bid or not, because if it's a, I mean, is, are the rules different if it's like a public-private partnership of coming from economic development?
No, it definitely would. Anything over nineteen thousand or a hundred dollars has to be possibly bid, according to state law.
Oh, okay.
And there was another question she asked.
Well, the station circuit, you said, how about if we built this in Station Circle, was it given consideration? And I think that's exactly what the question was, what is the flexibility of the products? So that, you know, we talked in council, uh, we're building zoning committee meeting the other day, we brought it up, you know, what is the timeframe that we can start planning and looking at the, the Station Circle areas, although it's a larger planning project? And we basically gave it's probably not gonna be something that we start having real discussions with till 2017 or 18, that's two years. I, I look at this project as a, as a five-year scope, ideally longer, but, you know, so, you know, here we have two years out till you can look at it, and knowing Station Circle, um, the physical aspects that would have to be involved would make it a much more expensive project than we're talking about now. But.
Right.
That planning comes in, and we say, great, in two years, we have a plan for Station Circle that includes a public space, that could either complement this, or this could be moved over, or maybe we'll have an unfortunate experience and say, alright, this is only a, it's a good thing we didn't invest the heavy-duty things that would have made something like this happen in Station Circle. But otherwise, we're just gonna sit around here, and then in two years have a separate discussion, it would be great to have a downtown project. So, it's been given thought on a broader basis. Um, I think at some point in the public life, we have to say, let's try to make something happen, and if there's a consensus from the council and the community that it's a good thing, you know, and put it in context of costs, as you know, that, um, we move forward if we. But to continuously say, what if we, we see we have not made significant improvements over the past few years in our infrastructure, if it works, that's, you know, if it works, let's keep going with it, rather than drop the bucket and say, well, it worked. Actually, oh, it works because at some point somebody improved it. We had this ten or fifteen years ago, when people wanted to reinvigorate the downtown with new sidewalks and, and such, and people were concerned about the expense then, um, in the design. Some of the, most of the things came out terrific with the downtown, um, project. There was, there were some negatives. I mean, we can look at Station Circle and say, not great design, um, and we're, we're gonna have to recover from that. Uh, so, but somebody moved forward, so the eighty percent that was good happened, and that's, I think that's a positive.
Yeah.
Okay, Kimberly Bezak, 237 Dudley. Um, I think, just to kinda echo what Katie and Ed were saying, I think the sticking point for the community, just from the feedback I've heard when we're down at the Parklet, or, you know, Mayor Movie Night, is that private property component. I guess folks just aren't familiar with a concept like that being taken up by a township or a borough. Um, and then I'm also just wondering, as far as the funding with the budget, you know, I, we just had someone in here, Graham, talking about, um, retail recruitment, um, and the costs that will be involved with that. I'm just wondering how this project and retail recruitment would fit together in 2017 with the budget, um, especially with the conversations the other night at Monday's meeting about Eco- Economic Development Committee's current budget for 2016, what it might look like for 2017. Um, I know Sean says it's currently at like $10,000, so I've just, if we could get a little more information about, I guess, that aspect, coming out of Economic Development Committee's budget.
Well, it's a full council budget. I mean, this would be, you know, one element of the full council budget. When you look at projects like this, I'll use the high $200,000 number, you wouldn't add $200,000 to the budget for 2017, you would put that in some type of long-term investment. If it's a five-year project, you probably would be smart to keep it to a five-year note of some type. But we have other notes, we have too many notes, but the dollar-wise, not so bad, but they're dispersed. We take long-term debt on, on purpose, because these are five, 10-year projects, different things, the fixing of this building, the air conditioning, the roofing is a big project that we're working on, and there's other areas that, as we get into the budget, we'll look at the capital. So this type of thing, you don't look at as a, now, it's $200,000, put in the next year's budget. You do look at, in priorities of what we need to do. Um, what Graham's talking about, that property is more of an operational type product that we have to look at, because that's an ongoing process. Um, so, you know, I think, that's why we wanna get information now rather than later, because, you know, we have to put together, what is our capital budget, um, and how much loans do we wanna take or not take as, as a community? But, uh, and so, you know, I'm about to say, yes, I like this project, this is what it looks like. Do we wanna, you know, if we do move forward, we'll choose that as a number, and ideally work backwards and get grant money and other investment money outside. But you do have to take on the worst-case scenario, if you're spending it yourself.
And just to clarify, as far as the land lease agreement that I've heard discussed between the Borough and the property owner, like if, um, you know, if we're leasing the property and it's the Borough's gig, um, if there's like food sales there or beverage sales there, how does that work? Like, does the property owner get a percentage of those sales, or is that?
We've looked, I'm gonna take you off on that, because we.
I'm just curious.
Started looking at that on the initial idea here, and we realized for two reasons, let's take that out of the mix. Because first, once you have food product there, it becomes a whole big project. Health code, competing with current, with local vendors, all that, so we pretty much took that out of the mix. And that was a question, you know, if somebody's there making money, why would not the property owner get a percentage of the money or a rent type of thing? But we've taken that part off the table. We do have to, you know, figure out, if we're gonna do this, we have to come to an agreement with the carol, is it, you know, two years, five years, 10 years? Um, and that's, that's a challenge ahead of this project, but it all needs. But the, the food part, because it was talked about initially, I should be careful that, wait, now this project is not.
Also, I add to that, based upon the deal with the downtown, regardless of the gear runners being in town, we had a new, we had a Parklet Social, we also learned by having those engagements, that residents love to walk and circulate the town. So it became a realization at that point, that they would walk up in town, get their drink, get their food, bring it back. It allows them to look at all the other stores as they're walking around. So you have the circular flow as opposed to this, this saying, we have food or drink in the park area. So what we learned from having these events, recent events up here, is that it's a good thing to have residents circling. They go to Sweet Maple before they go to the Greeks, go walk across to McShays, come back to a park with their food. Perfect. And that's why, you know.
So I did cut off, so I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
To take that.
No, I was just also thinking, like, in the context of the Oktoberfest that we just had there. So would an event like that be, um, allowed, since it's a food and drink type of?
Oh, I imagine so. That was not, that was a nonprofit event, there was no.
Cause it's a fundraiser.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, you know, I don't see a reason why it wouldn't, in fact, it would be enhanced probably. There's some pretty broad spaces up there, that would be nice to have them, you know, a little more social structure, Sally's design.
Yeah, I agree. Also, I think it comes community-based, right? So in restaurant-based, the restaurants, people are coming with their food to the park, you know, there could always be some kind of fundraisers with the local, you know, all the local restaurants or, you know, bakery and all those types.
Probably the concern that, that comes out of that question of, is maintenance, you know, how do you make sure that it's kept clean and trash cans are cleaned and all those aspects? But that's something we'll have to put into our.
I think that was in the lease agreement, right?
Well, you wouldn't ask the property owner, you know, they leave one of their washing, take care of that, yeah.
Simple stuff.
But we have a staff that, it's not a big event, but it's something that has to be recognized.
Oh, and then there's just regular maintenance. I mean, there's regular cleanup, there's regular, so we have, we have to include all of that in this as well.
Yeah, long-term maintenance.
Well, in short term. Somebody's gotta picking up the trash.
Oh, no, what I meant, always, maintenance is long-term.
But we have to agree who's doing that. Is the Borough doing that, is the property owner doing it? What happens if the Borough doesn't do it to the standards of the property would like? We have all kinds of things that I think we need to put in that agreement.
So when will we expect to hear, I guess, more details about all those questions that were raised?
I think what you do, the next step in the process is for the committee to present it to council in context of an economic capital project, um, and then the council says, yes, let's engage in this, and count on spending that going forward, and then you start working up the details with multiple bids, with property owner, um, and then some of the fundraising, you know? So probably that's a good way to kind of conclude this, because we're close to the 2013 frame, you know, is, you know, what is, what is the message we want this committee to give to council going forward?
Well, I think, I think this is a decision that all of council obviously needs to make, and so I think we need to let them know what we've heard, and then we have a discussion at the council level and decide, do we want to. and then we have a discussion at council level, decide, do we want to pursue this? And it, it really is tied into our budget decisions, because we, we have a number of capital improvement projects that we would like to do, that have been on the list for a long time. So I think we just need to see, well, where does all this shake out? And we haven't really had the discussion yet about capital improvement projects. So, I wouldn't want to say, oh, I, yes, we should definitely do this, or no, we don't want to. I think we need more information before we can decide that. And I don't mean about this particular project, I mean about the spending.
This is good, this is good information for this project.
Exactly, but we need more information about where we are with all our other capital projects, and where we might need to go. Because we do have some serious infrastructure things that we need to address, maybe not next year or the after that, but down the road. So how do we lay out the plan and take care of those things?
So, that's...
Thank you, Jess.
It's a great discussion, and I love the...
So, just, you're saying we should...
Which applies, I'm glad to agree. Personally, I think we, you know, I go to council, I recommend, that's, that's a member of this committee, not, not as a committee as a whole. There's normally, you know, these sort of concerns, be it maintenance, be it, you know, the steps we need to take. But, you know, I think at some point, normal, one of the functions of the committee is to digest the information and then bring it forward to council. Doesn't have to be a yes or no recommendation, but, you know, obviously bring the details. If not, if you don't think it's a good idea, then tell the council that, if you think it's a good idea, you tell the council that, and then you have to layer it in the cost and other priorities, so.
Yeah, I would, I would... Yeah, I think we need to bring it to council, I'm, I'm not saying that means, oh, yeah, I definitely want to do this. I don't, oh, yeah, they don't have any information, but I want us to...
Enough information on the project, or enough information on...
On how, how, how this fits in within our priorities, that's what I don't know.
This is probably helpful, thank you.
You have no problems.
No, no, I don't have any questions about the project, I think this is great. And so I, I think, you know, this, you know, to say, oh, yes, we should do this project, is a little premature. That would have to...
We don't have to decide, but we, we want to have it in the 2017 budget cycle, we should decide soon, so...
Yeah, but I'm saying, as a committee, I'm not ready to be, to say, the committee says, we should do this project. I'm saying, the committee says, we should talk about this and see how this fits into our capital improvement project. If you're asking me as a committee member, that's how I would respond to that.
But you guys vote, right?
Not as a committee.
Well, sometimes you do as a committee, I realize, it's not a fine cut vote, sometimes it's just...
It's a good endorsement, but council is the whole votes.
Right, exactly.
And that's why you do it, at some point you got to vote, you know, you're either in or you're out, and it's kind of the way it rolls, and then, because you never know. So this, I'm just, like, because I've gone to a lot of these where I live.
Which I'm here?
I live in Upper North Township, so, a little different, we've got different hubs, you know what I mean? So, which I'm a proponent of, you know, community development, dresser, it will run all these things. I've wanted to like, you know, have that, make community centers forever now. Ambler is for example, like, they, they keep doing it, we persuaded them to move it there, want to move it. But, I think that, you know, if, if, again, my suggestion, if you make those decisions to say, yes, we're behind this, it doesn't necessarily mean the project's going to happen, it means that you're, you're behind the project.
To the next step.
To move to the next step.
And that's what I'm saying, but the next step doesn't mean we're going to say, council approve this.
Well, no, because I think you would, because the council, there's still no money yet, there's still no, it's still getting, gets inserted into budget. It's, it ends up in 2017 or not.
We need to talk about that, we just still need to talk about it. We haven't, you have to understand, the Borough hasn't had a real capital budget ever. So we're just starting to get our eyes...
And typically, and typically, they don't, a lot don't.
Well, but it's not a good practice.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree, it's like everything else, right? But, yeah, these things that we have.
But we're, we're, we're trying to get on a better plane that way, we have operational budget and a capital.
Right, which is why you're doing it.
Just starting to, you're a piece of that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, I just, I mean, we've done the same stuff, so.
Is there anything else on that?
It's nice being here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.